All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome. If you all would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would also join us for a moment of silence before we move forward with our agenda. Thank you. And welcome. It's nice to see such a great, a great crowd for our public forum. We do have one item of business under new business before we move forward with the forum, and that is the 2015 Fire Department Annual Board of Trustees Report. Chief Tilly is here with us. He's prepared this report. It's in our packet. In accordance with the provisions of the North Carolina General Statute, Section 58, 84, 45, the annual board of trustees report must be certified before October 31st to the North Carolina Insurance Commissioner. This report, which pertains to the qualifications of a fire department to receive the coming year's firefighter relief fund monies, includes the appointment of two local trustees for the firefighters relief fund. Chief Tilly recommends Finance Director Beverly Kissinger and Fire Department Volunteer Support Member Jerry Kerlik to be reappointed to continue their appointments. So, anyone had a chance to look over this? Any comments, questions? A motion would be in order?
I make a motion to be approved, the 2015 Fire Department Annual Board of Trustees Report.
I'll second that. Okay. For any discussion? Others in favor, please say no saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for serving. Okay, with that, really the purpose of tonight, we do this twice a year, the board sets aside just pretty much a full agenda to hear from citizens, or business owners, or just a guest on any topic that you wish to bring before the board. It's trying to be kind of more of an informal environment that we can really just discuss items of interest to you all. So that's the point. We do like to, for the record, know who we're speaking with. So if you are going to speak this evening, we still do prefer if you would go to the microphone, that way everybody can hear what we're talking about. And if you'll just identify yourself by name and address. There are not time limits associated with speaking tonight, so you can pretty much have the floor as you wish. But typically what we do like to see is if we're all talking about a particular topic, that we would focus those comments at that time on that topic. So anyone else that wants to speak on that same thing, we'll give an opportunity to speak, we'll discuss it, and then we'll move on to the next topic. Certainly there are things that people bring forward that sometimes we're able to address pretty quickly. Other times, it may be stuff that we need to go back and work with staff on and work into planning. But we are excited to have all of you here. This is a great turnout tonight. And with that, we'll open the floor. Whoever is interested in going first, just raise your hand, we'll acknowledge you and ask you to go over to the podium. So welcome. Who would like to speak first this evening? Somebody has to break the ice. Okay, Amy, welcome.
Hello. My name is Amy Wood. I am not a resident, but a frequent visitor to Kill Devil Hills. I live in Manio. Me and my running and walking buddies frequent Bay Drive, and we are so appreciative of the porta potty that you guys have placed there on Bay Drive and Hayman Street. And I just wanted to come and thank you guys in person for listening to non-residents and residents.
Thank you. Thank you. And Amy, we received, I know, I received, I think all of us, at least three, maybe four emails from folks that are using the new port-a-potty. In fact, one lady, she was really cute. She said, "Never would I, never would I have thought I would be emailing someone to thank them for a port-a-potty." And I wrote her back, and I said, "Nor would I be acknowledging that." But anyway, we appreciate, appreciate that. And we're glad that it's, you know, making such an impact already. Thanks for the suggestion. All right, anyone else? Who's next? We'll go with Cameron and then Mike. Welcome, Cameron.
I just want to say, my name is Cameron Sodell. I want to thank you for having this meeting and listening to us, as you always do so well. I'm here on behalf of Kill Devil Derby Brigade, the Outer Banks Roller Derby League. We skate at Aviation Park, and we have 25 active team players as of, as of right now, which is a lot for us. We skate three nights a week, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, from 6:00 to 8:00. And our derby season runs from March to November, roughly. We try to skate year-round as much as we can. And I just want to say that if it wasn't for Aviation Park, we would not have a place to skate. It's, there's nowhere big enough or affordable enough for us to rent within driving distance. So if it wasn't for that park, we would not be able to exist. You know, we have had a couple of events throughout the years. You know, we haven't been around that long, but we've had some good events that, too, which have brought between 80 and 100 people each time from out of town. So, you know, we're really excited about that. However, this year we did have to cancel an event because of the rain, which, you know, is typical when, you know, having an open event space like that. But I did just want to ask about, I know there has been some talk about resurfacing the track, and I didn't know if you guys, if there was anything going on with that, or what, if you knew anything about that.
Thank you. I'm going to try to go off memory of, there's not anything in the current, is it next fiscal year? Okay. So the current budget does not have the surfacing in it, however fiscal year 16, 17, there is, we had to do a two-year budget.
Okay.
So the budget, when we adopted the budget last June, it was for the immediate fiscal year, but also we laid out the funds for the next fiscal year. And that was in the record, it was the resurfacing of the rink, and it was repairing the tennis courts that are back behind the field, the fire department. So, so those funds will become available to us July of 16. And you're, you said your march through November is when you guys are?
Mm-hmm. And, you know, we, and just, just to let you guys know what we talk about, and there's some other people here that are probably going to talk after me about it, is just a potential coverage of that track.
A roof.
A roof, basically. It's a joke, and I'm sure the skate park was a joke, I'm sure the hockey rink was a joke at one time, and somebody's dream, and so you're here to listen, and we're here to talk about that, that's a dream that we have. And, you know, our secretary, Brandy Ford, has also started a community project for us this year, and we have been approved to help clean up those bathrooms and paint. So anything that we could do to help make that dream become a reality, we'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Other comments on that? I know you've got several team members, and I guess there's some gentlemen, you'll have to share what group you're with. But Mike, can we keep on this track, and then we'll pick back up with you? Okay.
My name's Todd Bear. We've now started actually using the rink for a hockey rink as well, too. We've got about, what, today we're from 12 to 17 skaters that show up, week to week now. And we're actually in the process now, we've got a Facebook page, and we're starting, are going to try to get a webpage and stuff going. But we've got a lot of interest from outside communities, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, stuff like that, other teams up there. They've shown interest of coming down here and potentially playing with us, and maybe even having a tournament as well, too. I know the offseason's a little slower, but that's, and when it gets cold, that's hockey weather for us. So I work for the Ramada Hotel down here, and we've talked with them about actually being able to block in the hotel, bringing in the other teams, and actually providing cheap room board for them while they're in town if we do potentially get a tournament going down here. The only concern is with some of the, with the rink, the way the boards are set up versus for USA Hockey's regulations that keep the safety, they're the insurance company of the hockey program that covers all the players. There's a curb inside of the rink. Usually on a hockey rink, the boards go flush to the ground, so that curb can be a little bit of an issue. It would basically just be moving the boards in and dropping them down flush to the ground, which would just be something that would possibly be, could be done while they're doing the resurfacing. If that could be part of the, the budget, it's just a bit of a concern with us. And then there's some dips and stuff that would happen in the resurfacing behind it. But again, we're on board with the roller derby girls, and we'd be glad to help out and do anything we can to give any man, man-hours and labor around to help out around the rink and fix it up as well, too. So we just wanted to see where to go from there, meet with everybody, and the boys that we're actually out there using it, too, when they're not there. We're glad to have it.
I think it's, I, how long you go to the men's group?
We play, we've been about two years now, and we play every Wednesday. Wednesday night, we go out there from 7:00 to 9:00 on Wednesdays, we're there. And then we work sometimes in the offseason once a week, it's three hours of skating on Sundays, Wednesdays, we're getting two hours a week.
I'm glad you guys came out, because I didn't know, I met one of you at the Ice Cream Social, Scott. You told me you were doing, you're with this group. I didn't realize, I knew Scott before that. But I didn't realize that the men were doing hockey. And that's what I said, I said, "Well, come share that with us." Because I think one of the things, probably misinformation, is that that rink never gets used. And obviously, we know from the ladies that that's not the case, and it's continued to be, that use has been.
It's been a big thing down here since the early 90s. I never knew that thing existed. I know it hasn't been there that long. Still, once I first moved in town, I think I was here for a year, five years I've been here before I even knew it existed. But we use it a lot now, but it wouldn't get out there. And again, weather permitting, that sometimes dampers us. But it's nice to have the lights and the availability to go out there at night whenever, because again, we go out around 7:00 o'clock, and use the lights a lot to be out there in the evenings, especially in summer when it's mega hot.
And the two uses, then, even with what you all need for your play, doesn't interfere with what the ladies need, they're congruent. That, no.
And even too, like, if their resurfacing was done, since they use the middle of the track, they're not using the boards as much as we are, that we could even make the boards project separate from the surface. I think the surface is the main concern, and then we can work on the boards from now on out. And just basically just moving them in, you know, five inches and dropping them flush to the ground.
And if you has information, you've done any research, then, about the roof, you mean?
The cover.
The cover. Has anyone done any research on what's?
Yeah, we just wanted to know if it was either an option to start with.
Well, typically, all options start with looking at what, what's entailed, and the cost is, and what's, yeah, but money, and then, you know, what support it's needed to do that. But I think, I think the next step is some research and looking into that.
Thank you for your time.
You guys think, any other questions?
If that groups, would you just please give Mary Quiddly the Town Court some contact information? And when we are at our planning stage, someone can get in touch with you, use your expertise. This is Mary Quiddly, Town Court.
Before you guys leave tonight, walk up there and say, "Hey, Scott."
Hi. Okay, I'm Scott Lawrence. I live at 1403 Harrington Avenue. And I'm just here to reinforce the hockey club. Like we've learned tonight, it's now being used basically Monday through Thursday. And a lot of times I'll go in the mornings and skate around by myself, and there's one or two other women in there just practicing skating, too. So it's, it's even getting used more than that. One of the issues that wasn't brought up today is the misuse of it, however. And we do have, when we show up, you know, we've, we've scooped up piles of poop, there's, you know, if there's a soda spill on it, then that's like oil for our wheels and, or skateboard wax that makes it hard for us to skate. So that's another issue that we might be able to tackle, is, I don't know how we, how we would lock it, or, you know, we want to keep it open for, for active use, but it's just something I kind of thought of on the way here, that maybe we could, could tackle when we're, when we're getting into it.
Yeah, yeah, good points.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Any thoughts?
Well, I've noticed, I mean, there's signs that say, "No skateboards" and such, but kids use it. And of course, people walk their dogs, obviously, which I wasn't aware of that part of it. We have people on, and I suppose, you're not going to stop everybody, but.
You wouldn't think you would need a sign about no dogs, but.
I think the challenge would be if we tried to secure it, then technically everyone has access to it. So then everyone would have access to accommodation or anything else. So whether they state their real intent on using the facility or not, might be one thing. I sort of doubt, I doubt they'd actually tell you that they're going to walk their dog.
Well, there's the new KIBA box, and you can give codes out to everybody, and you know who's entering, because it keeps a record of it and emails it to the main computer. And you could keep track, I mean, code's afraid, referred to use, but everybody would have to push it, like the roller derby people would have their own code, and anybody that wanted to use it.
Like, like real estate has now?
Yeah. It's very, it's really simple, dumb a lot.
I feel the problem with that is a public park, and I don't feel like you can restrict the use, you know, by locking it. That would be nice.
To leave it open during the day.
And it was grant-funded, it was put in by grant funding, so we wouldn't be able to lock it. I think we've got some stipulations there, but.
Aviation Park was a grant from the PARTF, the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, in 1999. And it has remained open to the public in perpetuity with the facilities that are there. We've changed one facility, we changed a beach volleyball rink to the skate park. We got permission from the state to do that in 2008, I think, '09, maybe? Maybe, but it might have been later than that, I'm not sure. But anything that you change out there, but you can't restrict its use to certain groups because it was done with state funding for open parks of recreation.
Does that include dog walking?
What they're using it more for, if they're letting dogs in there, closing doors.
You can have, you can have rules and regulations at your parks, that's not a problem, but you can't, and I think he's right, people are probably putting their dogs in there and locking them in there so they can go walk, and then they're coming back and getting their dogs.
Yeah, it's like a big dog park.
Yeah, it's like a big dog park. But yes, there can be rules and regulations at your parks, but you can't say only the roller hockey and the hockey people can use the rink because other people are not using it. You just got to catch the people that aren't using it appropriately.
I'm just, I'm wondering if we can't come up with a system of, these are the rules, and the first time you get a warning, the second time you get a fine, the third time you get a bigger fine. And of course, I mean, it's, it's a matter of catching them, but, you know, sometimes the threat of getting caught is enough.
Yeah, it's a deterrent.
Well, and we have discussed, and I saw some mouths out there going, "Dog park, dog park." That is on our master plan, that was one of the items on the Baum Track Site Study, that committee that worked for about a year to put together a plan. In fact, even on the most recent, the rendering of the disc off course included this, the area sectioned off for the dog park.
Site plan.
Site plan. May help.
Yeah.
But you can't leave your dog at a dog park. Good, thank you guys all for being here. Good discussion, and I think get some research, make sure we have contact information. But hopefully you have some piece of time with knowing at least we are definitely moving forward with the resurfacing. Anyone else on any topic related to that, before we move on to?
After that.
Okay, well, welcome, Howard. Mike had his hand up next, and then we'll move on to Howard. So, Mike?
Mike Lowack, hi. My question slash statement has to do with the new ruling about signs that has recently come out prohibiting any regulations of signage. Particularly, what I'm talking about is the for rent signs, for sale signs that are up and down the beach road, because they just seem to be popping up. And I heard today that there was a lawsuit brought about by a church, and now the state stipulates that there's, there can be no regulations on sign or sign content. And what I see is that going to more and more and bigger and bigger signs to identify these properties. And if you've taken a ride up and down the beach road, you all know what I'm talking about. And although I'm all for them, I certainly wouldn't want to see a four-by-eight, a 10-by-12, 16-by-20 sign saying, "Jolene Realty, rent this house here, call us today." So I was just wondering if you all had heard about it, and if you had, if there was any discussions or planning that the town was going to undertake to maybe curtail it. Because although I know there's limitations on what can be said, I know there are no regulations on the size. And that would include all signs, realtor signs and the signs on the house. That's all.
I was looking at Meredith, yeah, I brought her back up, she reminded me of the update on the legislation, and then we can go from there. Mike?
I am not aware of any new legislation regarding signage. I know that the existing rules and regulations do not allow a town to control any amount of content of signs. That's a First Amendment right. You can put what you want on your sign, you can't even in your sign ordinance say types of sign. You can't say open or closed signs, you can't actually use those words because they might want to say it differently. Our sign regulations right now, specifically for rent and for sale, we do have size limitations on those signs, and we also have limitations on, they can only have one. And we recently, through discussion with the CAC, went out and did a sweep of the town this early summer. We had a lot of signs that were in the right-of-way, they have to be on the property, five feet. And they also had a sign on the house, and you can't have both, you can only have one. We had almost 100% compliance after we spoke with all the different realty groups, sent them letters, letting them know what our ordinance says and has said for, for decades. And we continue to monitor that. There's nothing that I've seen in any of the league memos that talks about prohibiting towns from being able to control size and location of signage, only content, which has been, been protected under First Amendment. So that's how our regulations work.
Thank you. So, yeah, hopefully that they don't, there's nothing.
We will surely be checking that tomorrow morning to make sure there's nothing out there that I don't know about, for sure.
Size, location, and quantity, we still can regulate. So, okay, well, we'll double-check that. But thank you.
Yeah, I think that, that's one of the things that the, when we have a code that's set up like that, and it's specific, it creates an even claim. Some real estate company or some individual has a lot of money and put up a great sign, and there's other people that need to compete with them, they either don't have the room or the means to do that. This way, it's the same for everybody. And also, and just as important as for the aesthetics. And a lot of the things that we get to come through, some of us and through staff and through the, through the town, are about how things look. And that's one of the things that, that's important. And as Meredith said, we did check that out early in the summer, and like, made up to do it again.
Thank you. Howard, would you like to go next?
I'm Howard Kimball, live on 803 West Sportsman Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, the commissioners, and the staff, the work that they did and are continuing to do on the sidewalks on 158. Me being a walker, I use those new sidewalks now, and, and I really do appreciate that. That's, that's a kudo. Now, the next thing is a comment that I heard at the League of Women Boaters that, that really bothered me. There was a comment made about, about you folks having private meetings. And I didn't feel that you all had, well, two of our commissioners weren't even there to begin with, because they aren't, they aren't running this time. But I would just like to, to have you all publicly declare and clear up the issue that the only private meetings that are held here are personnel meetings and ones that are directed to be private meetings with the attorney and that, and that kind of thing. Because when that statement was made, I thought, I don't know where this person come up with that idea, that, that you all was having private meetings, and the, the backdoor things about doing for one builder things you don't do for others and all. And I would just like for you all to publicly say for the cameras that, that that does not happen in our town, because I personally, I don't believe it, it does, at all. So that's all, I'd just like to give you all a chance to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard. I think we should all get together in the corner and decide how we're going to respond.
Well, I will come out first and foremost, the League of Women Boaters Forum is, is not set up as a debate environment. And I think, well, I'll speak for myself, when that comment was made, and then I've seen it in print since then, it is incredibly bothersome, because there are no private meetings going on, with the exception, if there is a personnel meeting, or we have been in closed session, but people even see us going into a private meeting, so it's not a secret meeting that's happening. But there are the few occasions that we do have to go in and have a meeting with our attorney, with legal counsel, and we're guided during that time that that has to be a closed session meeting. But that is, that is it. This board has been incredibly respectful of open communication, open meeting. This is the board that started televising meetings four years ago. We weren't televised until then. So we've been passionate about putting out the town's business and what we're doing. So I appreciate your question and giving us that forum, and I feel very strongly about that.
And I'll also add that while we encourage folks to call us, and I can't speak for everyone, I'll be the first to say, and I, and I've done this on more than one occasion, when I've had someone call me, and it's generally about something planning-related, if I have a contractor or an individual call me, my first response is to say, "What we need to do is to either contact the staff," because that's generally the first, the first way we need to go. Because I, I'll be the first to say, "A lot of times what they're asking me about is something that I'm not always up to speed on, unless it's something that we've dealt with in the past, I'm not going to be the expert on it." That's what we have staff for. So I direct them to, to talk with, with staff and/or to come to a meeting. And that's, and that's the best way to handle that. It's, it's not something that they can come to me and think, even if they're a friend, it's not something that they, they, I don't want them to think that they can come to me and get something, and then, and then me bring it to the meeting for them. It's, that's, that's not the way to handle it. And I've had several people tell me that they appreciate that. And that's, and I, and I think I've seen others on this board handle that in a very similar fashion. So again, I appreciate you allowing us the forum to say that, because we pride ourselves on the fact that we ran on transparency, and that's, that's, that's how we, we live and operate. Thank you, so.
Thank you, Howard.
Who's next? Who would like to go next? Hey, Matt?
Matthew Byrne. 1623 Wood Duck Lane. I'll get to the press conference. I'd like to jump in on the sign thing just briefly, if I can, because it, one of my biggest struggles with the town is the way we implement our fashion ordinances. Meredith indicated that there was a sweep of our town looking at the signs. I know signs are important, I know there's ordinances around signs, but there seems to be a very proactive commitment in the town about sign ordinances. But there's no other commitment to any of the other ordinances. I have, on numerous occasions, indicated that I have an issue in my neighborhood. There are multiple town officials, people, trash people, police, that drive through my neighborhood, and they're well aware of the business that's going on. It's an unordained business. But every time I bring it up, I get in a fight with my neighbor, because we're in a community where only neighbors can. But there seems to be a very proactive commitment in the town about sign ordinances. But there's no other commitment to any of the other ordinances. That I have on numerous occasions indicated that I have an issue in my neighborhood. There are multiple town officials, people, trash people, police, that drive through my neighborhood, and they're well aware of the business that's going on. It's an unordnance business. But every time I bring it up, I get in a fight with my neighbor. Because we're in a community where only neighbors can identify ordinance violations, except for signs. So it's very troubling to me that we spend as much time as we do. We actually have a person who's almost dedicated to the sign issues. But we don't pay attention to the other things that are going on in our community, unless a neighbor pitts itself against another neighbor. Pretty troubling. With that said, thanks for all you're doing with the press conference.
And I know, Matt, because I know we've had several conversations about the neighbor situation, and whenever that's brought up, I've reached out to town staff. They, they've made a point to go by on repeated occasions after it's brought up.
And they immediately tell him who told him, and then I drive by and he screams, "Representatives, get my light."
Well...
And he's not gonna change until you do something about it. He's already taken over the other side of the street like he owns it. Now he's taken over the other neighborhood. It's like the light industry's in the back there.
You guys know where we're talking about? Do you know where my, okay.
No.
He is on the, what's the name of the street again?
Ocean Acres.
Heading back to Nature Conservancy. And it's up on the hill, is where he's referencing, and...
Thank Father Christmas.
Right after the pavement ends.
He's built a pool pit on that side of the road. He's built vents on that side of the road. He's got a container that holds all the gas that he uses for his business on that side of the road. And it's had electricity running over there until about two weeks ago, under the road.
And so, for the times that staff have had concrete things to address him on and come remove, is he then putting some of those back?
He never took them out. He took them out for a week and then put them all back.
So he took them out, then we inspected, and then he put them back. He is putting them back. Okay.
Well, Christmas is coming. Sorry, but I don't want to be a shrewd, but, and I don't mind the Christmas thing. It's, it's the business that he runs 365 days a year. It starts at 7:30 and doesn't end until dawn.
Because I know when I get a call, and I, and we've been down this several times, and I'll call staff, and they will go out, and they will inspect it. And if they see something that is a clear violation of an ordinance, they address it. It sounds like he fixes it for short term, and then it goes back to whatever was happening before.
The bigger issue is, those little ordinances don't get anything done about them until a neighbor says something about a neighbor. But the sign ordinances, again, they're, they're pleased.
Well, one, one difference is...
Beyond the business owner's expectations. Ask any business owner about their sign.
Well, I would say with the signs, they're up and down the bypass, they're in your face. This, and it's just part of what we're battling is, this is in a neighborhood, and it is a neighbor, first neighbor pitting because of where, how it's originating.
I definitely, I definitely see where you're coming from. I mean, I live back there too. So, I think the part that troubles me is then the personal confrontations that will happen after the fact. So, if an item has been complained upon, then you do the, the initial inspection. What happens if you continue to do periodic inspections on the same item? It's not necessarily a new complaint, but it's a follow-up. It's a verification that the original instructions are carried out. That way, a new neighbor or a new complaint isn't being made by the same neighbor or a different neighbor. I mean, that's, but...
That's exactly what I, I didn't even make a second complaint. I just followed up. I'm the first.
Well, you know, and one of, like, your, your name being made public, unfortunately, that's part of the public information, once that comes into the town. So, I see your point on other ordinances as, as well. So, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's something that, I don't know how you pick and choose things that do get enforcement versus which ones do not, but...
Well, we've historically been complaint-driven. I mean, that's what. We don't have, other than like Matt's pointing out, with the sign, that's different. I mean, that was a targeted initiative, and that there's not the same strategy with everything.
Right. And so we had, we had an open meeting where there was complaints about that, so it'd be addressed. And, and just, there is a little difference between a sign, which, you, you made a good point, Mayor, that when you ride by, it's there. It doesn't go anywhere, you know? It can't hide. When you, when you run a landscaping business and have people that may or may not be there, and they maybe leave at seven instead of 7:30 one day, and you get there at 7:15 and, and they're gone, you don't see it. And, you know, your normal work hours are eight to five, and certainly gentlemen talking about it would understand that, and he understands that it's an extra effort for somebody to be there at six in the morning in the summertime to try to, to regulate it when it's in full swing. And, and it ebbs and flows, and it, it's not, it's not an everyday thing. It's what our observation's been, at least, when we spend a lot of time out there. And, and it, and it does come back. It has come back. And some of the things that are out there have been permitted. The ball pit, for example, has been permitted.
Who owns the property on that side of the road?
Well, there's a, there was an approach, I mean, there was, what, what happened is, is you have the Nature Conservancy that owns the property immediately to the south. And then, of course, there's multiple owners, private property owners to the north. And then there's a 60-foot right away that goes. And where that is, and where the survey stakes are, and, and all that, it becomes a little more complicated than, than just going out there and going to look at guy. And you're gonna have to be, be gentle with them and be, make sure you're right before you tell them you're wrong. Very important.
And just to let you know, you're not the only, not that it's gonna make you feel a whole lot better, but it is, as Shima said, as the mayor said, a complaint-driven issue. We, we had a very similar issue in my neighborhood, and it wasn't me. But it, it was, it was a neighbor, and it was extremely, it was, it was a very, very similar situation. And it was one of those things where my neighbor kept having to complain over and over and over. And it was just a matter of having to find this person in, in non-compliance over and over. And it was, it was a business that was being run out of the home. And, and it was a, it was a situation where the business was, it was, it was a happen, it was happening early in the morning and late at night. And unfortunately, that's not when your hours are, so it's, it was, it was, it was hard to, it was hard to find and, and hard to fix. Luckily, for, in that situation, which is not gonna help you, it, it was, it was a rental property. So, that, that, that situation kind of fixed itself a little bit. But it, it's, it is, it's a, it's a complaint-driven situation, so, you know, you hate to say keep complaining, but when, if, if they, if, that, that one escalated as well. I mean, police got involved in that situation, so it was, it was the same situation. So, it's, it's unfortunate, but if, if they're not, I don't, I don't know what to tell you, but I can, I can tell you it's not fair, so call, call me, call us, we'll, we'll do it again. Especially if they're putting it back. That's, that's not what, that's not right.
Yes, hi, I'm Chris Shay. I'm living on Highway Street.
Hi, Chris.
And this is such a serious problem, I believe, in, in Kill Devil Hills. And it's been very frustrating for me, as well as other people. I cannot tell you how many people, because they know I'm involved in volunteer committees, stop me in the drugstore, you know, in the grocery store, wherever, to complain about how something looks. And I say, okay, I'm gonna, you know, tell the planning department, and why don't you call them too? And it just seems like, I mean, I don't want more rules, but it seems to me that most times when I have a citizen complaint, the planning department goes out and looks at it, and then there's nothing they can do. And that's not what the citizens who are coming to me and coming to the planning department want to hear. And I don't know if we need to be able to fine-tune ordinances so that there are consequences when you don't follow an ordinance, or if we need to somehow scrape up enough money to have another inspector. I mean, this is a frustrating situation for more people than Matt and others who have spoken here tonight. I've had personal experience with it, and I've, I've started going to a different drugstore because one of the works kept complaining to me. And there, you know, the planning department says, well, there isn't anything I can do, because yes, there are six cars in the yard, but they're all registered. You, you know? And I don't even drive down Swan Street anymore. And anybody that knows Swan, Swan Street knows which house I'm talking about. And I've lived here, you know, since 95, and it's still a mess. And I, so I don't know what the solution is, but I must say that I think it deserves some attention and that maybe something can be done so that we can be more proactive and make our citizens happier, including me.
Well, I mean, you, you raise a really valid point, which, well, several. But the first one that rings with me is, if staff inspect something and they don't find something that's in violation of an ordinance, they can't do anything. They don't have the authority to do anything. So, I think that's something we can actually try to have the committee that you're serving on. We gotta start somewhere.
Oh, yeah. We're always the bad guys.
You just happen to be on two things, Chris. I mean, you're a glutton for punishment right here. But anyway, the, the committee that you're starting to start with, the Community Appearance Committee, with staff looking at with the planning department, taking the concrete examples that you have, they can pull up the case and say, okay, you can recall that when you were stopped at the drugstore and they were, you know, asking you this. Take that situation, pull the record of when they went out, what they found and didn't find. And so where is the ordinance issue? You know, where is it? And can, is it a matter of being able to tighten up an ordinance? We've done that, you know, with different ordinances to put some teeth in something so we, we can fix a problem. So that, that's my first thought, is let's look at those specific cases and see, is there anything in an ordinance that would then allow us to, to respond? Since right now, you're saying there's cases where we can't respond. I think that's probably a first place to start. The other thing that you brought up, which also goes to Matt's concern too, is we are not staffed to have someone to constantly drive around and see if everybody's complying with all our ordinances. And I think that starts a very big discussion on whether you really want that, whether the town wants that or not. Because I will tell you, I know we get heat already with our planning department that, you know, when, when we are enforcing ordinances, and it's, you know, it's not a fun job to have. You know? I, I just think we need to think about that as part of the discussion too, because it's easy, it's easy to say, let's have someone drive around and let's, you know, point these ordinances out, and then let's deal with it. But how much time that would take with all of our ordinances, and then all of the different properties we have? And is that the culture that we are trying to create? I don't know. So I, I just think I throw it out there that it's a point, but I think it warrants further discussion and input.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We'll be waiting your solution.
Don't hold your breath.
But I do, I do think we, I would appreciate some of these concrete examples, and, and even with, with Matt, with the site you're talking about, with, I mean, you have a list, I'm sure. I'm sure you have a list, if not, you make a list of all the different things that, that you have either brought before or continue to feel are violations. And let's see if, if they are or they're not. I mean, some have been, and we've tried to address it. If you put some back, then... But if they're not, we need to look at our ordinance, because we can only enforce what we can enforce. And if it's not a violation, then we can't, so.
I have a full-time job. The town's job is to put ordinances in place and make sure that people follow it. You, you have a number of ordinances. You have a limited staff. You have one person dedicated to one ordinance. That person needs to be spread out into some other ordinances. I mean, by and large, that's what she does.
Who are you talking about? No, not you.
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
Is that what you're talking about?
Sign enforcement.
Yeah, when events, and so, I mean, there's a, a broad, that, that job, that's one of them. But there's, I know all of our events and our, yeah. Well, I think we can start with some concrete examples, and then we can look at some ordinances, and then we can continue to go by that property. There's, you can live near there, drive by there as well.
What are we looking for?
One of these is, is there a business operating illegally? And then before what was addressed was there was electricity pulled, and it wasn't supposed to be wood permitted. Meredith, were you leaning forward to say anything or not?
Okay. We did tighten up our nuisance ordinance, our violation ordinance last year. We added a provision for chronic violators, so... Another thing that I want to point out is when there is a complaint and the staff goes out and, and identifies that it is legitimately a complaint, a letter of violation goes out, sometimes a civil citation goes out. This is a legal process, and it's not fast, unfortunately. I know that the community wants it to be done quickly, and it depends on how willing the person that's committing the violation is to do it. Sometimes that process can take a very long time, and I know it's very frustrating, and there's legal measures and legal steps that we have to take. And if it gets into the court system, if anybody's ever been in the court system, that's a very lengthy process. But one thing that we did, because that process is so lengthy, is last year, this board adopted an ordinance for chronic violations. If a person has been in violation and that violation has been remedied, and then they violate again two times in a 12-month period of the same violation, we no longer have to have that, those lengthy notice of violations and 30 days to fix it and things like that. We can go directly into the process of the legal system correcting the violation. And this board did that last year. So, just wanted to let the citizens know that sometimes it does take longer than anybody wants to correct violations. But the other thing is, we have taken some proactive measures for people that continue to violate, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Meredith.
Okay. Anyone else have any going?
Colleen Almody, 909th Avenue. I just wrote down two pieces, two words on a piece of paper, because I almost feel like we have a big theme going on here. The first one is communication. The second one is participation. I think that in the past couple of years, we have grown leaps and bounds in trying to get information out to the public and to our visitors. To hear that you were here for, you know, 10 years and didn't know that there was a place that you could, you know, play hockey, like, oh! And I remember coming to town meetings and hearing about, we were gonna do a Christmas display at the Frog Pond, and I was like, I didn't even know we had Frog Pond. And I was here all the time. I think that, you know, we still have a lot of work to do. And in, in tying together that theme of communication, I think that the public doesn't really know where to go or what to do when they have a need. And I don't really know how you get that information out. You know, we were just talking about, okay, there's a person in the town that has this responsibility to look at code enforcement. Now, that would be like a cool thing to know about. And I don't know if we can, you know, over a period of time, kind of do an organizational flow chart that says, okay, we start with town leadership. These are the people. This is some of the responsibilities that they have. And then reporting to them, and then reporting to them, and reporting to them. I think that, you know, it takes a lot of people to make this town work. 117 employees, that I learned this week. You know, they wear a lot of hats and they do a lot of things. And I personally know that I would love... And I personally know that I would love to do something to be able to recognize the level of effort that they make. So I think communication is a big piece. And I also think participation is important. And again, they almost go hand in hand because I know when I first moved here and started to get involved in things with the town, like, I didn't know what I didn't know until I got my feelings hurt and, you know, got my feathers ruffled up a little bit and dug in and really started to learn. Every single time we have a public forum like this, I say the same thing. We need to get people involved. So after making that statement, I'm going to flip it back to you guys. And I really want to hear if over the past year, since I've mentioned this last time, what have you done to try to engage more people? Or do you have any new ideas in trying to get people engaged? You know, I talk about the town all the time. I love this town. I love coming to planning board meetings because I can hear the discussions. I see what ideas people are throwing out. I understand what the challenges are and what the positive benefits of making a change or new ordinance are. I hear the discussion. I learn. I get excited. I get engaged. And then when it comes to you, I hear why you agree with it or why you don't agree with it. And I just wish I could figure out some other way than, you know, grabbing onto a friend's elbow and saying, just please come to one meeting with me because they're actually really fun. And I know that people email me and Facebook me and call me all the time and they go, "Do you know what's going on in town?" And I'm like, oh, yeah, I kind of do and here's all the details. But it's only because I'm involved. And I wish that we had more than six people at the Board of Commissioners meeting every time we meet. And I wish we had more than three people at every planning board meeting. We have all these people complaining about, we have too many ordinances, there's too much law, there's too much this, too much that. Come to a meeting and talk to people and find out why we are where we are. And if you think it needs to change, I really want to find a way to make it a clear understanding of if I feel like something is wrong, who do I go to? Where do I go? How are we going to get there? And what do I need to do to be involved? Because I think that most people don't know. So that's about it. Thanks.
You want to start? Anyone wants to tell us?
Well, I think that's one of the things that I've noticed over the years is an idea will come, maybe from one of our committees, the CAC or the Bontrac or something, and it goes through that process. And they have their meetings, they're all through the public. And then it goes to the planning board meeting if that's appropriate. And they have usually more than one meeting on it. You know, they'll talk about it, maybe table it or get some more information. Then it comes to us and we set a public hearing and the public hearing gets in the paper and people come and say, "Why didn't I know about this?" Well, it started seven months ago and it's been public information. Some of it's been in the newspaper. Understandably, they can't cover it all because there's other towns besides us here. And not everything's important enough to put in the paper, understandably. But, yeah, sometimes you come to a meeting and if you come, there'll be four people at the planning board meeting and after you leave you say, "Wow, what a nerd I am. That was boring." But that's all you have to do. They're not all excited and they're not all about something that you may necessarily care much about. But we've tried to get the information out there ahead of time and post-meeting with YouTube and the mayor's capsule critique of our meetings and the minutes which are open to the public. So I'm not saying there's more pizza. I keep saying pizza, but we had pizza.
We'll go back to margaritas.
I'll just start posting the agendas on my Facebook page and sharing them with some of the Outer Banks local Facebook pages. The ice cream social posts by far got the most attention. But, you know, I'll keep at it. We'll see what happens.
Free ice cream.
Yeah. There you go.
Is this a new topic or is it?
It's on this topic, but I can wait.
Well, I'm calling to think that we all haven't addressed her thing, so she's eyeing us. But anyway, you mentioned Facebook. I definitely, over the last year, have really made a point to share, you know, we have the town's Facebook page now and they put out every agenda. And if you haven't liked the town's Facebook page, please do, because you get every meeting notice, every agenda, anything that's coming out. You get the fire alerts. We also have a town fire department, police department Facebook page, fire department. So like each of those because you get lots of information. And I, of course, have liked each of those, but I make an effort to, anything that comes out from the town, share that because then that takes, you know, reaches the, almost 1,000 people that are connected with me and they'll get it whether they want it or not. So that's one way. You mentioned the spotlight. And we also recognize people can't, I mean, while it would be great to have this type of audience every meeting, they're just, there's either, either we're not interesting enough or there's just not enough personal content that's personal to them.
They have responsibilities.
For them to want to or be able to be here and make the sacrifice like you all have done so well tonight. Which is why it's really valuable that you are able to get the meeting and watch it on YouTube at your convenience, whether it's 3:00 in the morning or whatever. You can watch that meeting. But I think it's taking the next step from there. If they do have something to end, you know, something to say about it or they want their voice heard, to know that they legitimately can send an email either to us directly or to Mary, and that can become part of the public record. So just because you don't have an opportunity to come to a meeting, doesn't mean you don't have a voice. And so I think that's important for people to understand that they absolutely do. You guys were not able to attend the League of Women Voters Forum for a medical reason, but Dad's doing okay. But anyway, that was a question that someone brought up at the Voters Forum. And I jokingly said that, you know, we have talked about food. We've talked about this for a while. So I was joking and said, I don't know if you remember, that maybe we should do a raffle. Get a ticket. You get a door, you know, get a prize for a drawing or something. If you come to a meeting, you're going to get a raffle ticket and we do a drawing, maybe we can start giving out gift cards. I can give up some of my stipend. Let's get a gift card fund going to do that. It would be a neat experiment to try because if you can't get here, people here with food or money, you're not going to get them here. You know, it's not going to happen. So that was my thought when you asked that question again, is maybe we really should try that and see if it works. But I do think people are busy. They have, you know, a lot going on. The agenda item that they're going to come out for, like these forums, when they've got something that they really want to share. But I think they do need to know that it can be shared on their time as well. But it would be nice if it's shared earlier in a topic of discussion versus once we get down to the meeting that we're making a decision. We have pulled back a couple of times this year. We have pulled back making a decision when we had a room, you know, of people that were expecting us to make a decision because we hadn't heard from a group until that very night. And then that frustrates people as well and progress, so. My two cents are four.
Well said. The social media, I think, is probably the fastest way to reach a large number of people. I'll add one to, not just liking the official Facebook pages, but make sure you subscribe to the actual YouTube channel because then that way when updates are coming in and the new meetings established are published to be watched, then you get a notification on that as well. I don't know if there's a way that we could embed our videos into our YouTube page.
We will be linking videos from the website. And Michael has linked a lot of videos from the Facebook page. So, but we will be doing a list, an actual list of all the videos to be done on the Facebook page. It'll be like, just, just go get one.
And you all can help us too by sharing. I mean, that share button is great.
I mean, and I, I'm amazed that the number of people would actually come up and tell me that they've watched the meeting on YouTube because it's, it's a tough time to try to get everyone here too. I mean, it's been tried later, it's been tried this time and, you know, it's a, you keep everyone up late or, you know, you come in partway through a meeting or something, maybe catch up online with some of the things we missed, but it seems to be the best way to reach folks has been on Facebook and social media, so. So I had a conversation with you on, as we get into some of our larger projects, the questions are going to start flowing pretty quickly on, you know, why are there bulldozers in front of my beach house? So, you know, that's, you know, while I think we've made some strides, I don't think we're where we could be with regards to some of the information flow that may be necessary. I don't know if Mary or Michael can get help with those calls. Coming in February, March timeframe, but, so I mean, that's definitely something for us to think about. And any more information that we can proactively distribute, the better.
Yeah, beach nourishment coming especially, and put more information out and people help share that.
I just had a thought. I don't know if, if folks that are renting the houses, if they like their Realtors' Facebook page or anything like that, but maybe if we encourage the real estate companies to share some of the important things. Obviously not everything for every town, but some of the items, maybe that would be a way to, to reach other audiences as well.
I work with the public every day and literally come in contact with hundreds of folks that live in all of the municipalities. Most of them, a good portion of them percentage-wise live in Kill Devil Hills just because of where, where the center that I work in is located, is right here. So it's just logic says that most of the folks that come here are going to be either on the beach or in Kill Devil Hills. Also, the committees that I sit on, you know, dictate that not, not everybody that I work with is going to be seniors. So we have the Mission Mercy Dental Clinic that, you know, is going to be happening in April, which is a good time of the year. But also, I mean, it's, I talk to people, so I hear a lot of things and I, and I have people tell me stuff. And when I say, "Come to the meeting," what people tell me back is, "Well, why don't you just tell them this for me? Why don't you, you just give them my information. I don't, I don't want to sit there." So I hear that a lot. And no matter how many times I say over and over and over, it just is not going to mean as much coming out of my mouth as it does yours. It falls on deaf ears. So again, I don't, I don't know what the answer is. If I had it, I'd pull it out of that magic hat because I'm like you. I don't know, you know, at the bomb center, the answer is if you feed them, they will come. So that's, that's the answer. The ice cream socials, that's proven that fact, but I don't think we can have ice cream at every meeting. I just don't think that's going to work. So, but again, I think if we can, if we can keep people talking to us, I think that's a great, a great thing, having those lines of communication open. But I, but I think there's got to be another way as well. So I think, I think the more things that we can have, like the ice cream social and like the fire department open house and, and the things where we can get the folks coming out and talking to people and socializing, I think that's probably some, the town does that extremely well. Well, and I, I think that it engages the citizens, it makes them feel comfortable, and I think we get a lot of information when those things happen.
Sue, would you like to speak now? You're so patient. Thank you.
Oh, listen, no problem.
Sue Kelly, 211 Sea Village Lane. And I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Colleen said and what you responded to. I remember the meeting, I think it was November of 2012, when a lot of people came to the open forum. And those issues that were raised became pretty much the work of the Community Appearance Commission, the CAC, when it was appointed shortly after that. So I'm standing up here to say, we need you all to come up with some other ideas. Our meetings are always open. We generally meet the fourth Thursday of every month at 8:30 in the morning in this room. Our next meeting will be, however, December 10th, which is also Thursday, and it'll be at 8:30. We combine November and December because we can't very well meet on Thanksgiving Day. But we welcome anybody's participation and we would really like to hear what you would like to see this town do, the things you like about the way it looks, the things you would like to see different about the way it looks. That's what the CAC is directed to do, to make us look as aesthetically pleasant and attractive as we can. So we welcome you to bring your thoughts and ideas. And that can also be a place to start with concerns about people who might be violating ordinances that already exist. But come join us. I think personally that it's really easy to get involved in this town. I've always lived in big cities, Virginia Beach and Richmond. And here in Kill Devil Hills, you can participate. You can volunteer to serve on groups and you'll likely get appointed. And then you can get to know folks and do things. You meet a lot of new friends and I think it's really great. So thanks for everybody, you know, who participates. And if you have any ideas about things and would like to bring them to us as a way to start, I hope you will. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sue. Who else would like to speak this evening? Anyone else? Yes, welcome.
You have to forgive me a little bit. I'm not the best off-the-cuff speaker, so I kind of wrote my thoughts down. I'd like to start by thanking the mayor and the commissioners for having this forum. It's great for the community to have a chance to attend a meeting like this and able to inquire or complain about any issue they might have. I'd also like to thank Mayor Davies, Commissioner Reubottom and Commissioner Hogan for offering their time and commitment to our community by running for office again. It's always of interest when election time comes around that there are individuals who run for office in all our OBX communities that bring up issues, whether they be real or manufactured. In Southern Shores, it seems to be trees. In Duck, all seats are open due to the fact that they, they don't stagger their election process. In NAGSAD, it revolves around pushing for fresh ideas. And here in our town, it seems to be about disgruntled small business owner. To all these people, I say, where were you over the past couple of years? The best way to get your voice heard is to express your opinion in a pub, in public at a meeting instead of hiding behind the keyboard of your computer. It's easier to say anything, whether it be real or from your imagination, when no one's looking you in the eye. All rules and ordinances are put in place after several checks and balances are considered. All committees and boards are made up of a diverse cross-section of our community. That way, town gets ideas and opinions from builders, small business owners, engineers, retired people from all walks of life. One of our newest ordinances involves display and storage. Even though this ordinance would directly affect his business, one of our committee members helped develop the final language. This to me proves that he understands that the town is looking out for all of us, not just a few. I think that if anyone has an issue with how their town is run, their first step should be to try sitting in a seat at a meeting and attempt to become more informed. If they have a true interest in our budget or our rainy day fund, it's easy to get that information. The town staff is more than willing to share and explain all of it. To say that info is not available would just show a lack of desire for the truth. I, for one, when I cast my vote, will keep in mind that people I want running my town will be well-informed, have good judgment, and not do something that embarrasses themselves or the town, and lastly, makes decisions that considers the whole community, not just a few. The last point I'd like to make is how disappointing it is for the public to have candidates from every town that claim that they all have this free time to hold an office but don't have the time or organization to either be at early voting or have representation there. If you don't have time to run for office, how can you have time to hold office? Please, everyone, take time to get out and vote. Thank you.
I like the fact that you pointed out that Chris Merrick, that heads Atlantic, Ocean Atlantic Rentals. And as you said, this was an issue that greatly would affect his business and, but he, as you said, and over many meetings with the CAC, with his input and his sensibilities, they were able to come up with an idea that, that we ended up dealing with. And so it's a perfect example, I think, of keeping a big picture, you know? You know, a lot of people think that, you know, you should do what's best for them or you should do what's best for the, for the homeowners or whatever, whatever it happens to be. But I've always tried to say, keep in my mind, what's best for the town. And sometimes what's best for the town is really good for a business and sometimes it's not and vice versa. So that kind of stuff. So that kind of stuff really pleases me when it works out the way it did, in that case, anyway.
Anything they want to share? Scott, you coming back up?
No.
Sorry. I mean, I put you on the spot. Any closing comments or thoughts for anyone?
I had someone contacting me on Facebook to complain about the size and bulk of the beach houses events.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes. And I was at a meeting today, it was an interesting thought, and I don't know the legality of whether, so I said we would look into this. I was at a meeting today with some folks that are planning the May Mobility. It's an event for veterans. And they weighed in and shared that they think any house over X number of bedrooms, she threw out 14, but it could be, perhaps one way we could look at addressing this is require any of those homes of that magnitude to be ADA compliant. And I, we can't do that.
It's no carry on a building.
I was wondering if we would...
Superseding no carry on a building if we did that.
And we can't, we can't make that ordinance...
Legislation was recently passed that you can't be more restricted than safe.
That was in that same legislation. Okay. So that's the recent one. I just thought it was interesting. Her take was if you're, if you're building of that size, you really are building to have, use it in more of a commercial fashion, and commercial structures have to be ADA compliant. So I understood where she was coming from. And we had, we also had an email that came through from Mary that she had shared too about someone expressing their concern over the size of homes. Which is a topic that we are asking for citizen input on. We had a joint meeting on this topic with the planning board and the Board of Commissioners a couple of months ago. We discussed it at our meeting two weeks ago, to try to get input. If you have, if you're not aware of this topic or all of the facets of this topic, it would definitely be, those two meetings would be worth pulling up. You can kind of forward to that part of the discussion in the meeting. Because it is multifaceted when you're, when you're looking at this topic. But you've got opinions on both sides. But it is something that the board is committed to continuing to look at and explore.
And right towards the end of all this discussion, the state came out with some rules about, about how you, different ways you can't control the homes and such in your town, like number of bedrooms and such, which a lot of places do. And that sort of complication thing, and I think in my mind, it's a little teeny bit of a setback, because now we have to make sure we understand all that before we go forward, so we don't mess around with state regulations.
There were other topics that we had put down. No one from the public has brought up. Chris is shaking her head. But these are things, if you saw the announcement of the meeting, these are things that the board is, they're on our radar, and we're exploring these. So whether you haven't thought on any of these tonight, or if you go home and, like Colleen, you're thinking about the town later at night, please, please email us or call us or email the clerk or come back to a meeting. But we are looking for input on these large single-family dwellings, some of our safety initiatives that we're looking at with some adding new signage on the beach road that crosswalks, the potential use of Fresh Pond. We'll be discussing that at an upcoming meeting. Like Sue already kind of did a PSA, we're constantly looking at the appearance of the town and suggestions in that committee. And then the other thing is, and this is a carryover from previous discussions too, zoning intensity specifically for hotels and motels. When we adopted an ordinance modification, well, we made changes to the floor area ratio six, eight months ago, we, we heard from hoteliers that were concerned that this would limit their ability to either rebuild or bring in new hotels. And we didn't want to, I think the consensus was, the goal of this board, or the vision of this board, wasn't getting rid of hotels and not having hotels, because they do serve a faction of people that need that type of accommodation versus rental homes. So having a discussion with some of our hoteliers, and unfortunately, there was a big conference out of state that a lot of them were at, so this night didn't work for them to attend. But that is a discussion we want to continue as well and look at what options there may be with those ordinances. So like I said, if you don't have comments tonight on these, please, please, please know that these are items that we will be discussing at future meetings, and we really do want to hear input from our citizens and business owners and stakeholders.
Just a reminder, so we're very easy to get in touch with, so boc@kdhnc.com, and you get all of us with one email, one email address. And if you go to the website, our personal cell phones are listed, our individual email addresses are listed. Let us know whether it's offline now, future. We'll take the input any way we can get it. And like you see, we'll give you emails and we print those out, and those become part of the meeting minutes as well. So even if you just email a comment, sometimes we don't read them all, but in the meeting, but they do become part of the meeting minutes and everything. So we'll take the information however we can get it. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'd like to give some kudos to a member of our audience here, Mr. Eddie Goodrich.
Oh, Lord. It ends the world.
No, Mr. Goodrich is associated with the Soory's Treatment Plant back here, and he's gone to great effort to try to correct some issues back there with some odors and things, and I commend him for that. And three times over the past three weeks, my wife and I have taken bike rides back there, and each time she's commented that I don't smell anything. And which is, and we go right by it within a block of it. And the weather conditions were different, and I'm really, was really glad to see that. Thank you very much.
It's actually working better than we ever anticipated. There's a, just, there's, the fume scrubber has 2,000 cubic feet per minute of power.
Scrubbers?
2,000 cubic feet per minute. And the tank actually is, it'll empty the air in there in five minutes, and it shoots it straight up in the air. It's working as good as anybody could ever ask.
Yeah. Well, that's an example of working with the town and over a period of time and coming up with a solution and implementing it, and it really worked. And I'm thankful for that. Thank you, Eddie.
Necessity is the mother of invention.
Does anyone have other comments or anything to close? Again, just thank you so much. Great attendance tonight. Appreciate people's input, and please keep it coming.
Yes, thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.